A variety of different views from yard work to, until I come in now.
We are on folks. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and we call the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve seconded.
I would ask for a friendly amendment that we change items set to approve the minutes of the September ninth instead of August ninth meeting.
Yeah, so moved seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and sec- moved by Jeff and seconded by Santos as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three, you'll receive comments from the public. Anyone here wishing to address the board on a subject not on our agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item number four, items with Mike Nolan, Horizon Architecture. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Okay, so two items on the agenda this morning. The first is, I think we have the change order first for the courtroom. So we'll do the bad news and we'll do the good news. So this is essentially, as we got down to the last arrangements in the courtroom to get the new benches in place, we had originally had two to be right across the front. As we looked at the alignment, essentially the benches, we decided that they didn't look quite correct. So we decided to make some modifications to two of the benches so they could all be stacked down the right side. So essentially, this is the time material. We just had a very quick response from our wonderful wood shop at Pearl City. They got them in there, got everything cut down, put in place. And again, we were trying to get everything ready for the, uh, the case that was starting on Monday morning. So, uh, the request would be to approve change order to the furniture arrangement for six hundred and fifty dollars.
Love to approve.
Santos is. I will recuse from that.
Santos has moved, Jeff is seconded. All those in favor? Scott is seconded.
I'm recusing.
Jeff is refusing. To all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed say nay. Abstaining. Jeff? All right, it is approved.
Uh, so we have, as you know, the courthouse is up and operational. Uh, we had a few little things we shook down last week mainly with the IT side. But other than that, I have heard nothing. So I'm assuming that everything is running very well over there. Uh, very happy with the way the work, uh, panned out. I do anticipate that talking with Brian Wolf, that he has a few other kind of odds and ends that will be up here probably within the next week or two to discuss for more or less the financial wrap up. But again, what I like to do at the next meeting is we do those things is probably move back through, talk about the overall budget and just to give you guys a synopsis of where we started at, where we were. Just 'cause I know there's some, some questions about how are we doing overall with the contingency and some of the, uh, the additional things we've added on here. But just more or less so everybody has a full sense of the accounting of that project. Uh, I will say that from my standpoint, I think things went very well. And we just have a very minor, if that's something we can discuss, uh, the, uh, the things that we brought were, there were positive things that we decided to do additionally. And then the things that more or less the, you know, the uh-oh change orders, I think they're actually pretty minimal when we get to the end of the day. So again, I'm very happy with the way that project ran throughout. All the subcontractors performed fantastically. Uh, I think the work speaks for itself. So thank you again for the opportunity to work on that project.
Yeah, I think, Mike, the, I think you did a nice job on the design and everything. I think the dedication of that, I think everybody was very impressed and well pleased with the results.
Very much so.
So, good job.
All right. So, item number two is we have bids back for the maintenance building. So we did have six bidders that submitted for the maintenance building. Um, we received by ten AM on Thursday. So you got a copy of the bid tabulation here. The original contract as published was around one point four three million dollars. Uh, and you can see from the bid tabulation that I love it when I overestimate. So, uh, we actually had the lowest bids. We had a cluster that were about a hundred thousand dollars below that, uh, with the lowest responsive bidder being Swanson Construction from Bettendorf, Iowa. Uh, again, I want to thank all of the bidders that put the time and energy into this. This was a very good bid process. We had a lot of really good questions. A lot of people really digging through the plans. Uh, I think the fact that there's a lot of complexity to it, um, and the fact that our partners at Acxiom Consultants did a really nice job putting their set together. Uh, the questions we were getting were not like, hey, you forgot to put in the walls. There's a lot of really grand other questions. This makes me believe that the contractor really dug into some of the finer points of the project and got what we're trying to do here. So my recommendation would be to award the bid for construction, uh, to Swanson, uh, Swanson Construction of Bettendorf, Iowa. Uh, if that makes sense, we'll prepare a contract speaking with them. They are ready to go ASAP, which we would definitely encourage to get concrete in the ground, uh, as soon as we can. So, uh, you can see the other bids down the list there. We had some locals, uh, you know, very, uh, people we're used to seeing here. So, uh, we're excited to build relationships with Swanson in this project.
Have we, have we done work with Swanson before?
Uh, Swanson does not have any projects in the county per se. They did submit a qualifications and previous project looking through.
References and whatnot?
They did. Yep, absolutely. And that's available. Uh, Sherry has that if you'd like to review. After looking through their, the project, the size and the scope of their project, they seem to be a firm that's very well equipped to do this. They have a long track record, about fifty years in the Bettendorf area. So, um.
One of, one of the things that concerned me in, in this, in the bid tab was if you look at the o- the over excavation costs, they're, they're significantly higher than the other bidders. Uh, I thought it was fairly significant. And do we, have we kind of assessed the risk? Cause I know we think that site area is kind of a big unknown. We talked about that. We think there were some houses demolished there and maybe pushed in. Do we think that that, I mean, I, I don't know what they were, like twenty bucks a, a cubic yard more on, on than the next, than what appeared to everybody clustered. Everybody was clustering that fifty-five, fifty-eight dollar and they were seventy-five bucks. And I'm just like, if we hit a bunch of over excavation, are we gonna eat up all of our savings? Do we really leave there's a risk there or?
So, we know that we're probably gonna run into something. We don't know exactly where that was. The way that we could have, we, I just considered the way to potentially try and mitigate that would be do some geotechnical borings. But given the nature of the infill, you, you could hit four borings and hit good soil and then have the bad infill right in the middle. So it didn't seem to make sense at that point to make that investment. Uh, my, looking at the overalls, we did have the lowest on the unit cost was fifty-five, the highest was seventy-five, but they were clustered all through there up to sixty-five. We are not allowed to use the unit price as a dis- basically a, uh, factor in this. Uh, I, I would say they're all probably fairly reasonable. Um, and I, I couldn't say for sure what it would be. Now, whether we're gonna have that much over excavation to eat up a hundred thousand dollars, uh, I would, I would be surprised. But there again, without having a, you know, an X-ray vision to see what's in the ground, we'll know what we get into when we get there. So.
The next bid is only two thousand dollars higher and it's ten dollars cheaper on the unit excavation cost. So that could go up very quick. But you said we can't account for it at all?
Unfortunately, the only criteria we can use unless there was some reason not to, uh, to, they were unqualified to do the project is it just has to be on the base bid of the number of the biscuit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all right with it. I mean, I just, I just don't know what, uh, what we think our risk might be.
I just know it's there like.
That's a crystal ball question, honestly. And I, I know he can't answer it because even if he did do the borings, you're not gonna.
You're not gonna.
You're not gonna know. I mean, until, until we really start getting the actual excavation going, will we be able to start really identifying if there are any potential risks there? But I just wanted to make sure we had references, history that this group is able to, to meet what we're requesting. Because this is a, a pretty time-constricted project in regards to execution from the start to the end. And, and I had contacted, um, Mike in regards to this also, just in concerns around, you know, making sure that we can get a contractor that's gonna be pouring the concrete before, you know, winter hits and we're not doing any tunnel low pours, you know, because then you're putting blankets down, heating the ground, things that just become very, very cost, you know, adders. And you're not, uh, to me, a, a challenged amongst doing all of that and then knowing that the base is the most important. Your foundation is the most critical pieces of the construction is the important when it goes into the start, starting of it. But he gave me very good feedback. Mike had explained to that, you know, they're aware of it and if we can get this approved, obviously that'll be the first piece that they're gonna start getting into. And, and that's, you know, basically in, 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 you know, quick review of what we'd had, I, I, I feel confident. If he's feeling confident that Swanson can do the work, I think, I'm familiar with most of these other groups. I just had not heard of this group before in regards to that. But if they have good references, then I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Santos has moved, Jeff is seconded. Any further discussion?
The only question I have is, is, uh, what, what kind of timeframe would they be able to start on this project?
It probably is quick as we can get a contract in their hands. So, uh, upon your approval, I'll prepare a, prepare a contract, uh, get them, to them for review and execution. And within the, we'll have that back here next week. They sound like they were very motivated to get moving. So, uh, I would not be in their way, uh, as far as that goes. So from a process standpoint, we'll get them a contract, we'll get the contract executed, and then we'll sit down immediately and start to discuss project schedule. Um, talking about, about long lead time for submissions, but being that a lot of what's the immediate work is just basically to get the site prepped. My thought would be as soon as they can get mobilized, they will probably be there starting work. So hopefully within the first year, first two weeks of October, we'll be seeing some machines.
Did we, did we talk through this whole project or, and I don't remember our agreement with you, Mike, you were doing design, but have we got a construction management contract on this as well?
Correct.
With Mike, okay.
So I basically changed hats here, put on another hat, and now I run into the construction management role. So we're working very closely with them to coordinate project schedule, to look at a lot of these items, to really get things, uh.
Cause I believe in this bid, this had like substantial completion April, right? Something like April, May.
And we did get some questions on that. So, you know, and the question may come up, if we don't finish in April, is there any sort of liquidated damages or any sort of incentive or bonus? There's not. Typically, what we do is I put in the timeframe to let them know what our expectations are for the project. But with the understanding that once we sit down and really look at the project and their schedule, we'll verify. And if it runs out a little bit farther, we'll talk about the exact schedule. Um, you know, some people have asked you, would put in some sort of liquidated damages or bonus if we do something along that line? My concern is we would get either much higher bids or we just wouldn't get people bidding on the projects. Uh, we have expressed April. I think with the size of the building, if we get going immediately, that seems to be fairly reasonable. But once we sit down and really rough out a schedule, then we'll come back and talk a little more about that.
Yeah, and I, I think from my, my personal opinion is, you know, I mean, we wanna do this, we wanna do it right. And, you know, nobody knows what the weather's gonna do. And what I don't wanna do, to Santos's point, is I don't wanna be pouring concrete when we have to risk, you know, like, get a poor, poor quality floor inside our maintenance facility. We know something, something that's gonna long-term be a headache for us. We wanna make sure it's done. It's done at a time of year that's conducive to getting good quality product. And if we have to wait a little bit, I think we have to wait a little bit. And that's, that doesn't bother me.
You've got about ten months, right? Turn it down to first to second time. Sometimes that's a little cool.
Yeah, and I, and I'm thinking that this had a fairly amount of underground work, right?
We have to do a little bit of work to get, you know, a lot of the site related, but to, as far as interior, the concrete, we have to get, start plumbing and our water into the building. Uh, we have a sand oil separator needs to get out to the lot. Some of those things could potentially be stuffed in and unnecessarily need to be done. Like farther down the road, the site work, my guess of that was probably things we would hold to the spring. So not trying to pour concrete for the, the water, the drives and things along that line. That would be things I would encourage them to put off to the end, which you'd probably wanna do anyway. So you don't wanna be doing construction over top of fresh concrete. Uh, the, probably the, one of the longer lead items are more, uh, let's say labor intensive is to get the coils into the, the concrete before, uh, pouring for the, for heating. But there again, that's just a matter of coordination and making sure that we have excavation done, get the site prepped, get the plumbers on site to get that put in place, and then get the concrete. So that's probably a two or three day versus a two or three week of the slip. Uh, one of the things that we did discuss is that the concrete specifications have specific requirements for if you're doing cold weather. You have to follow the ACI, uh, regulation, I think it's three oh five or three oh six. Same thing for hot weather. So we do build in, if they are gonna be doing things outside of what's the minimum criteria, they have requirements to, you know, do either different admixture or something to adhere to that. Um, also, we discussed, given the timeframe of the project, they can see what the schedule is. They know exactly where that is. So you will not, he'd seem to be coming back to you asking for additional money for any sort of cold weather specific additional requirements for the concrete. That should be built into what's in their schedule right now. So.
I do know, just to make a note, that they did, uh, pass a new sidewalk approval. So it's gonna be something that the city has. So, um, it was, it was five inches before, but then they changed it just recently to four inches.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so just something to, to note that, that, uh, the city, um, engineer went through and actually, uh, made a comment through that in our most recent meeting. So just so when you start getting your drawings and everything as far as sidewalks go, we'll, we'll be following through what SUDAS's program is.
Okay.
Which is a four inch base. Only a six inch will go where drive-through vehicles will be on top. So.
We'll review that and that may be something that I think we're probably built to a higher, or refined to a higher standard right now. So maybe an opportunity to do a swap or request a credit. But we can change some of that to a little bit slower. So.
Just, uh, something that I just wanted to note that just came through. Thank you.
Did we have a motion?
I made a motion.
Yeah, I second.
Okay. So is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, Mike?
That's it for today. So expect to see me a lot more in the next coming weeks as we wrap a few things up, get a few more things shooting along. But thank you for your time. I'm gonna scoot out of here and we'll get, uh, Swanson going.
Mike, I do wanna just make a note, if we could, when you start getting the updates to us, I, I'd like to be able to see if we could just do either weekly pictures or just something, just two or three. Not that a lot of your time, but just kind of an overall. So we can eventually do a time lapse of how we've executed this project. Either it be an overhead or a drone or something. I'd like to be able to show that so we can share that eventually through our county website to show what we're doing and how we're executing such a good project like this.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
And Sherry, when you go up every week and set the clock in the dome with the power down, take some pictures for us, will ya? That was a joke. She does not go up there every week. That's not, that's not true.
Uh, moving on to item number five, items with county engineer Keith White. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. We have one utility permit today from Eastern Iowa Light Car, Wilton, Iowa. And they are essentially south, they're on the east side of Wildcat Den, south of one eighty-first. And they're, they're proposing to bore across one eighty-first to provide a service to a new shed on the north side of the road. It's pretty straightforward.
I'd like to approve. Second. Scott's moved to approve. Jeff is seconded. I'll be recusing myself on this vote. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to nothing. It is approved.
I'm sorry, who, who moved in? Who seconded?
Scott.
Scott.
Jeff. Yes, sir.
Next up, uh, and B and C kind of go together on discussion on purchase of a new motor grader. So originally, we had, uh, discussed with Altor for CAT, two, um, machines. They did quote us a, a third one. And I went ahead and listed this here. Uh, a couple of things to note, the, the CAT one fifty, we're replacing one forty M twos. We, we have some one forty M threes. And I think you'll, the, the one fifty is essentially peel off the one forty M three and stick one fifty on there. It's just, it's virtually identical to what we have. They're renumbering a lot of their product line. The, uh, on all these units that I've showed, the trades, we have, uh, at a seven-year, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar guaranteed buyback, which currently beats the market by quite a ways. Um, our last purchases in two thousand eighteen, we're, we're a two point three eight percent per year price increase. So the price increases are, are reasonable. And, you know, we have one budgeted in the current fiscal year. Having not done in the next year, we would have had two coming due. So I went ahead and showed one at the beginning and one at the end of the next fiscal year. The, the advantage to committing now is, uh, we can commit to this price for machines that are not going to deliver for a year or more. Otherwise, we can not do that. And then do one now and see what the price is a year from now. But I think you'll, you'll find that it's higher, the trade values, as long as we don't get past the dates of those machines, it's, the trade values will stay there. And the three machines we're proposing to trade are all right around five thousand hours. One, one's closer to six thousand. We do have, uh, up to seventy-five hundred on our total machine warranty. We've, we've been trying to optimize the hours run amongst all the machines to, to keep as much warranty as long as possible. Further want to tell you that after, whenever this batch is dealt with, there are two more machines, which are fifteens, that will come due in twenty twenty-two, that still have this, uh, guaranteed buyback on them. After that, the buybacks have gone down as the used market has gone significantly down. So after those two, we'll probably be looking at keeping the machines longer unless the values came back by the trades. Uh, but right now, so we've been on our seven-year guaranteed buyback rotation, keep them under warranty. And so we don't have any large expenses on these machines. Pretty much in the neighborhood of what we've typically budgeted for one of these machines to with trades.
Keith, I, I got a few questions. No, I'm, I'm good. I just have a few questions on this. So, um, does Altorfer do the, the warranty work?
Yes.
Do they also do our maintenance work on them then?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So you, you, you put out the.
Current.
Cost for FYI, the overall cost of their buyback is still the same every year. They're gonna give us a hundred and thirty-seven K.
Yes.
On the trading. Their cost for the units doesn't go up even though it's going out three years from now? Their unit cost of three hundred and eighteen?
They will, they will order them. Well, first off, I said, we're, we're seven months out on delivery.
Uh huh.
Um, sometimes they struggle to make the seven months, but they will, they will order them. Altorfer can order lots of times, maybe twenty machines at a time. We have in our two-year before, we've had them get them and they will, it locks the price for Altorfer from CAT.
Okay.
So their, their cost.
Uh, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm just questioning that they're gonna be able to say, oh, yeah, we're gonna guarantee your cost two and a half years from now at the same price that we're selling to you today. Normally, there's usually costs that go up percentages, but.
Right. I would expect there will be at least one, but probably two price increases in between there. I mean, the price of steel drives prices a lot plus labor costs. But steel seems to really drive it.
So, we have a, uh, you said a seven-year contract with them?
We, we have, when, when we, uh, back when we first started doing that, they like to give a five-year guaranteed buyback, which they still do. Uh, we're just not putting hours on or having the difficulty to, to really justify executing a five-year buyback. And we had asked them way back then, and what's, how, how far will you go? And, uh, the seven years is how far they'll go.
Okay.
And, and it's a, it's a guaranteed buyback, but it's, it's our option.
Yeah.
It, it's been a couple of years now that we've executed the buyback. Prior to that, we were seeing trade values, they were giving us trade values higher than the buyback. So of course, we took the higher value, but now that's not the case. A lot of that is tier four stuff and the third world market's not there anymore. So we send it by and send them overseas.
When we, when we do that type of a contract with them, are we basically then not competitively bidding anything else other than going right through Altorfer?
That's correct. That's correct. And I mean, there's only one CAT dealer option.
I, and I'm just asking.
That, that's correct. It's like our trucks. We, we've opted to stay with, uh, CAT motivators.
Uh huh. Okay.
Yeah, and, and how close is the, the next CAT dealer? The one?
Well, it's Ziegler, but they, having been in the Ziegler territory for, you know, over ten years, uh, anybody that was Ziegler wishes they could buy it from Altor.
Right.
Their prices are higher by considerable.
I understand.
And, and but it's absolutely territorial. We can't.
Absolutely.
They control the distribution as well.
Pass.
And you're buying from Altor. Yes.
The pass. We've tried other graders and not been very happy with them. It's kinda like CAT makes the best machine.
We've had deer, we owned one while, when I came here and we, we did competitively, well, we quoted them once upon a time. The board vote was extremely interesting with only a couple of members making the decision. We bought a deer, they did not meet our specs, they did not bid a buyback. The board opted to do that and I don't know if we lasted a year or two before that was gone. Because in the construction world, it's not the same.
No, and what, I guess I was just more from a perspective of, I always like to see multiple bids just to continue to make sure that we're not allowing one vendor, one supplier to get, you know, potentially, you know, taking advantage of the fact that we know we can only go or sole source through them.
And I'd say we're quite sensitive to that when we consider prices from Altorfer. And we expect, and just like the trucks where we're being all mad, we expect to be treated well, being a good customer and not taking advantage of.
And so you're doing some sort of research to make sure that we, you know, this is what the going market is of some of those.
You can always look at what all the other counties around you pay.
Yeah.
Or elsewhere, or go to the other side of the state, but.
So I guess what my request would be Keith, in regards to this, is if we can make at least a reference of checking out for some of those, not spend a lot of time, but at least maybe come back and say, hey, this is what, you know, Illinois or Missouri's paying for this same type of a unit. I can, it's public information, we're right in the same ballpark. To me, it's not, it's just, just to know that we're at least getting the, the best price for what we're paying for. My request.
Is there a cap on hours on those machines, are you not clear?
Yes, at seven years, it's 7,500.
7,500, okay.
They don't have to actually pull it for it, I mean, they, some.
That's fine.
Sometimes it floats a little bit, might be 80. We push hard if we put 1,000 hours a year on, but I mean, that's, we have a couple of guys that run about 1,200 and the rest of them run about 1,000. And so one of the things we've been doing is make sure that when a unit goes into spare status, that it gets used. So it's not having warranty hour setting there, not happening. So we typically break through the 5,000 hour number, you know, with these, but we're usually not pushing up against the 7,500. And like I said, we've, we've tried to be keeping these longer and I, if, if the trend continues, then like I said, after another set of buybacks, which is two more beyond this, then we're probably going to be keeping machines more like 10. It's just a speculation because that is down the road always. Thanks.
Okay. So I'd make a motion, do we want to do these all in one or do we want to just consider them separately? We have, we have item B and C. I would just make a motion to approve the program as presented with all three units.
Jeff has moved to approve items 5B and 5C. There's a second? Doug has seconded. Any further discussion?
Just that we could get some sort of reference, just some ballpark number of other counties or other states that may have that price. What's my other request? But I, I'd prove as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any project updates Keith?
There's not a lot that has changed from last week. The box culvert, bridge replacement projects. The one on North Ice at McCully, like I said, they seem to be in different gear than Iowa Bridge. They poured all the footings in two of the three barrel walls and slab sections. So they've got the outlet barrels and walls and the drop inlet and then the B2 in the top. Both of them were kind of washed out from their site with the rain this weekend. Iowa Bridge has still got some footings to pour, so they have just less crew on the site. We did have one spot up on the Seal Code of North Ice that where an access to come back and do a patch. We have a soft spot just going through the railroad tracks there. That's kind of it on the construction end. On the design end, also not a lot different. We don't have any new update from Hickory Hills for Bridgestone Bandag, but Dennis and I do have a meeting with Hickory Hills tonight. Same projects that are headed for the November letting are still on track. That's kind of it, questions on projects?
The only question I have is on North Ice, are you talking to where they just redid the road?
I'm talking just around the F70 where the road's closed and they're replacing the bridge. Kind of, they have a diversion dish, which, you know, that, in our rain gauge at the office, we had four inches. I know we hear a lot of three inches around the county, we had honest four inches in ours. So it wreaked a little havoc there. Other questions on that? I had two other items. One thing I'm going to bring you one of these days soon. FEMA has suggested, usually every one of these disasters, we have to tell them something like, we always build our bridges this way. Those sorts of things. We do tend to normally, in this county, build to, certainly to the design standards, but the, the big question is a bridge 24 or is it 30 foot wide? We tend to build the 30 foot wide bridges. So if we were replacing a bridge, they definitely want to hear, well, that's, you know, you're not just doing that because you're getting FEMA money. These are your standards. So they have put out a model of suggesting that you list all of your standards for everything, which I have reviewed, but I have not reviewed it with my engineering staff because they're kind of busy in the field. So as soon as they get looked at, I'm probably going to bring that document to you for consideration for adopting, saying what our standards normally are. I mean, some counties say every paving project will be poured with concrete. There are, I don't know, they might say every paving project will be taxed with those things. So that document's coming before too long. And then the other one, and this is a little bit cart before the horse, but wanted to make you aware of it, that the question may end up here. This wasn't directly to me, but Randy Hill, writing on behalf of the Trails Committee, has requested flashing lights at 57, 41st and Highway 22. So when there's a little more response to his question, that, that will probably come here. I have not reviewed that in depth, nor do I yet know exactly what this request is. But did discuss that a little bit with the engineering staff. We have, we have some concerns about that, about, I don't know if any of you've seen the ones. I'm assuming those are the type that are on Colorado or that are now down by Kent Stein. Stewart Road has 5,000 vehicles per day of 55 miles per hour. I would want to see some support from the manufacturer that pushing a button and having a light flash is effective on a 55 mile an hour road and you're not telling Nathan when he pushes the button that him and his kids are going to step out into traffic. Because they're not stoplights, they're just flashing lights. So right now, I'm thinking, you know, we need to be a little bit cautious about, about that.
Perception of safety versus true safety.
I, I went back and looked at the signage on those again because, you know, my perception was, yeah, push the button and cross. It doesn't say that, it says push the button to activate the flashing lights. I do like that idea better than a constant flashing, which will just go into the background and
Don't pay attention at all.
You know, you never see anybody, but anyway, that's, that's all. That, that will, question will come up. Randy was asking about, you know, looking into a grant to help pay for those because I think they're a little more spendy than normal things.
Five grand.
A T sub grant, traffic safety.
Will the grant help us maintain them after the grant's done?
No. No, no, but the grant probably says you will maintain them.
For sure.
You know, that's the thing you run into with your trail question period is who's signing on for responsibility of maintaining it? And you might want to review your approval of that trail of who you said would maintain it. That's all I have, other questions?
Anything else for Keith?
I, well, I was going to follow up, I got called on, on the area right before you go into Deep Lakes again. There's, and we talked about this a while back, it's kind of an area where vehicle traffic goes over and there's a lot of, with this rain that we had recently, it was a pretty big area where vehicles would hit the water. It was about two or three inches of standing water, it's just right after the first, and you mentioned it a while back, but.
At the railroad?
Yeah, right at the railroad. I don't know if you can at least take another look at that once before we get into winter, if that's going to become an ice slick or something.
We, we did take, take a look and I did talk to Kirk twice about, because if we were to do a, a direct drainage situation, we'd have to be draining onto Deep Lakes property. Kirk told me they had some, and we have not tried this yet, but they had some success down there with excavating and breaking down through a hard pan that's not very deep and that it drains. So that is something we're going to try in that area. And if that doesn't work, then, then I mean Kirk was receptive to us making a little channel out into his area.
This last most recent rain, I think, had a lot of vehicles pulling out into the other vehicle oncoming traffics to try to avoid that water and it was just something that I got called on. I wanted just to bring up as far as engineering review. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you Keith, appreciated. All right, moving right along to item number six, Community Services Update with our Community Services Director, Disability Services Coordinator, Felicia Topper. Good morning Felicia.
Good morning.
Can you fit that all in one business card?
No. I want to thank you for giving the opportunity to take on this position. It's, it's been a lot of fun, I'm just coming into my fifth week and I keep, people are still asking me, you came back? And it, I think it's going very, very well. I've gotten to know the staff, I'm visiting with service providers and community partners and some of those things pretty steady each week. We've looked at budget and I have an agreement with the staff that they're not going to incur any overtime unless they have prior approval from me to do that. And that's going to help us get to the point where we can actually zero budget to see what we're actually doing. We're catching up on a couple of projects that kind of have fallen by the wayside. One being a list of all of the tasks for each job so that we can get a feel for what's really important, what's not so important and what are we doing because we've always done it? To see if we can lean some of that stuff out because I know with every organization, you know, you, you do things kind of rote and it may not be necessary. And one example of that is I was getting a report, a bound report every month about this thick of budget stuff. And it really wasn't making a tremendous amount of sense. And Sherri will probably tell you that I have been a general nuisance week after week with the budget, having her go through it with me. So I said, I can get into the N code system and I can look at those reports without having to have them printed out and bound and all that sort of thing. So, and in the end, we found out that those reports don't always match what's in the system. So in order to make good decisions, we need to have them match with the county system. So we're working in that direction. I'm getting to know the regional process and the regional players and that sort of thing. They're going to have to, the board's going to have to make some hard decisions because we are overspent in that budget. So they're going to have to make some decisions about that probably today to decide what they want to do about all of that, how much they want to cut, what they want to cut, that sort of thing. And with those cuts then, I'll be coming back here to make sure that you're all aware of that. I know Nathan's on the board, so he'll probably be giving you an update on what we're doing. So as we're going into zero budgeting, those cuts are going to become an important piece of that because we have various, we have everybody that has tasks under mental health, under the regional mental health. And the question is, is that a good idea? And how do we want to go about some of that? So hopefully by the first part of the year, we're going to have that zero budgeting done and be able to see what we really, what we really want to do against what we've been doing and what can be thrown out in terms of things that we just don't need to do anymore. Another example of that is we have a guardianship. There were pages and pages and pages of guardianships. And Teresa B. said, do you want me to keep putting these in a book? And I said, what, what are you using the book for? And she said, well, we've always put them in a book. I said, are they in the computer and are they in the client file? And she said, yes. And I said, then don't keep putting them in the book because we have other places we can go get it. We can not do that. So it's just little things right now to help the staff be able to free up a little bit of time, be able to take on those things that are really necessary to do. Do you have any questions for me?
I just wanted to comment, I appreciate your effort and your work, going diving right into it with both feet. I mean, we've, I've continued to hear good things already and, and I'm glad that we as a board made the decision to bring you onboard.
Thank you so much.
And we're excited that the next coming months as you start getting integrated and, you know, into the role better. But no, I just want to applaud you for the hard work that you're doing and thank you, appreciate everything you're doing for us.
Thank you so much.
And I will say that, you know, I'm anxiously awaiting as you kind of, you know, we've had discussions and you hadn't been a part, but on this whole trust services and that whole thing where the regions wanted us to provide that more regionally and, and you know, we'd kind of talked about a business plan and, you know, I'm okay with expanding those services, but Muscatine County residents shouldn't be paying for it for other counties. And, and so I'm sure you'll dig into that and look at that and I look forward to that. I think it's, it's, time has come and it's, it's good. And I, I really like the thought that you're kind of just going back with a fresh set of eyes and taking some things off people's plates that maybe are not value added anymore. I think a lot of times as we update our technologies in our organizations, we kind of continue to do things and really the only way technology pays off is if you quit doing some things you used to do. So I appreciate that.
And right now, we have an absolute moratorium about taking on any outside trust cases. We will not do that. It may be a hard stand, but until we can really evaluate what it costs us to do that, we can't, we can't be having Muscatine taxpayers taking care of that. That, that just doesn't make any sense. And I think to some degree, the budget with the region may have some impact on that. I don't know that a vast majority of the counties have some guardianship and that sort of thing going on, but not at a high level and cer- certainly not. but not at a high level, and cer- certainly not conservatorships like we take on. And those are the most intense and time-consuming pieces of the puzzle. And at this point, if the county boards of supervisors in other counties have said, well, we don't want to do that anymore, I am hesitant to say that they might be willing to pay for it otherwise. So I want to be very, very confident that when we give them a quote or a price, that they're gonna be willing to go with that or not go with that. If they don't go with that, then we're not gonna take their consumers.
Yeah, I, I think I'm always interested in some of the things we do and understand the tie to code and what is shall and what is may, and then so that we are able to make those decisions. The board is, you know, aware of what we shall do and what we may do, and then we have those discussions as to whether we feel that's a service that this county wants to offer, uh, because we're asking the taxpayers to pay for that.
And I have to tell you, the trust program, um, just in what they're doing, does an awful lot to stabilize consumers. Just in terms of being able to have contact with them, budget some of their money as a payee, being able to make medical decisions when they don't have any family or friends or anybody that can do that. There's an awful lot that they do to stabilize those consumers, so that we don't have the higher hospital bills, and we don't have, RCF placements that are way more expensive. So, I, I, as far as what I've seen so far, they do a great job with that particular aspect of that process, so.
I just want to tell you that I really appreciate your approach, your position here.
Oh, thank you.
I really do. I'm, I'm kind of a numbers financial guy, and I really liked what you just told me this morning.
Yep, we're gonna, we'll have a picture for you at some point, for you to take a look at and see what to think.
Felicia, thank you. I've told you privately, and I'll say it again publicly, if you need anything, don't be shy. But, uh, well, we're glad to have you aboard, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And I'll just keep bugging Sherri into you, Tony.
Oh, please. Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes at the September ninth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting.
Will do approve.
Second. Santos has moved. Jeff has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, Correspondence. Santos, we'll start on your side.
Just what I just mentioned in regards to the Deep Lakes that, that, uh, our county engineers can look at already. And they had the courthouse rededication on Tuesday of last week, and we had the Farm Bureau, uh, annual meeting. And another item was that, I got a, um, email, a request in regards to it was a youth group wanting to know if there was any volunteer activities that they could do in the county. I was thinking something Deep Lakes, or I was thinking even maybe Discover Park, but they didn't really say, it was just twelve to fourteen year olds. I want to see if Nancy could follow up on saying if there's any departments that need anything, but I think it's something that, you know, from our perspective, when we think about always being community and county involved with, with our constituents, um, it would be great for a good PR, also for them, and also for us in regards to if there's something that they would like to do, as volunteer activities. They didn't really get into details, but I thought if Nancy had some ideas, we could, um, give them something, but.
Yeah, I wonder if conservation might be a good outlet, and then, I don't know if Frank Isle, Islefoot, his group, you know, he says rebuilding together in Muscatine County, and I don't know how much county outreach they do, or if it's more city in Muscatine, do you know?
Uh, he's tried to reach out into the county, because he's actually asked to try to sit on one of our meetings with West Liberty to try to come out with, uh, five or six houses there, and West Liberty that he's looking at wanting to rebuild. He has a scheduled meeting to talk with the city council, so technically, it would be the county as well, too, but, um, I didn't have anything. I just told them that I would reach out to our board and see if you guys had anything to brainstorm. I mean, if we have some ideas, great, we'll throw something out there, if not, you know, I'd like to think that we could, but.
Between Nancy and Kurt.
If we reject conservation, that's public department's most likely in that project. That, that could be handled by that age group.
Great, great. I was even thinking just, yeah, just, I didn't know really what to say. I just told them that I'd reach out and find out. That's all I have.
Jeff?
Uh, I just attended the Farm Bureau and the courtroom rededication as well.
Same here. Scott?
Uh, I also attended the Farm Bureau, and I had, uh, two different calls from residents. One was in regard to, uh, some overhanging trees on, uh, Swithin Road, just, uh, up off Highway twenty-two. And I had a call in regard to worsening on a road edge on one fifty-five, and I'll just speak with Keith on those two issues.
We had a special meeting on Wednesday at nine o'clock, a little development to discuss our hotel feasibility. And they're moving forward on that, and we've kind of upgraded to a middle upper class hotel. So.
That's great news.
Nice.
That's great news.
Started coming into play, get pretty serious about it now, so.
Did they say where they were thinking, what side of town, or?
It's gonna be close to the intersection of thirty-eight and Highway six, on their industrial park side. Where they've got some free space there, so he's gonna donate that.
Yeah, that's excellent. Great news.
Yeah, could be nice.
And those, great addition to the county.
Any other, uh, committee minutes?
No, just want to remind everybody we have our final race coming up this Friday night. West Liberty Fairgrounds, and there's, so maybe Jake is taking the place there.
Got it, committee minutes?
Um, I have nothing.
I had the Seventh Judicial District Correctional Services meeting on Friday the thirteenth. Nothing too exciting there. We got some grants that, uh, we hadn't gotten before, so that's always nice. Jeff?
Um, on Friday the thirteenth, I had the EFSP Board, I think we're as Phase Thirty-six, I think we talked about funding. This is a board, this is, this is some federal funds that flow into the county that are, so we did two, uh, grants, I think about eighty-one hundred bucks to MCSA for feeding, food pantry kind of work, and then Community Action of East and Iowa, we got another, about a three thousand dollar grant, and about eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. Board meets once or twice a year. It's not a big, real terribly active board, but it's very important that people attend and participate, because we continue to get funding for different, uh, missions, so. I had that Friday.
I had no meetings.
Uh, item number ten, Received Information from County Employees. I see Brian Wright is ready to go. Brian, good morning.
Just a reminder for the viewers watching, tomorrow, there's gonna be a public hearing for the Muscatine County Hazard Mitigation Plan. It will be at the MCC, Larson Hall, Room sixty-two, that's the Muscatine Access Nine Video Studio. This will be tomorrow, Tuesday, December seventeenth at four thirty P M.
Brian, could you tell, tell at least the viewers in a paragraph, what is hazard mitigation? I mean, we've heard that name quite a bit, and just for the public, just so they know.
We have a five-year hazard mitigation, mitigation plan with Muscatine County. It is due next year, so we're in the process, I'm working with the Bi-State Regional Commission. We've had a public hearing last week, we have one today. It's just basically getting the information out to those communities, those entities, school districts that want to have some information. Next month, we start planning with the, the stakeholders, have these meetings, so the process is gonna continue for the next couple of months. Ultimately, Bi-State Regional Commission will get that information. It gets submitted to FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency for approval, and it's our goal to have our plan, our five-year plan by September twenty-twenty. So this is basically looking at, at different categories, what we consider. One year, we had flooding was number one, and then we go down the list. We could have another year where it's, it's tornadoes, so we're just looking with everybody. I've had the meeting last week that was at West Liberty, and I did have a lot of the, the city officials from some outlying areas that had attended. This is basically just letting the public know, Bi-State will have a little presentation, what, what the process is, but it's just more for, for the public to be aware.
Great. All right, thank you.
All right, any other county employees? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along to Items with the Administration Office. Item may is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Zero-nine, zero-nine, one-nine, zero-one, suspending the collection of taxes.
I moved to approve. Second.
Okay, Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded. This is a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
And Doug? Motion is approved. Anyone aware if there's anything else with the Administration Office? Sherri, nothing? All right, anybody else have anything for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.